The Wilson County Commission Meeting. I'd allow you to come back at any opportunity you can get, where you can watch us on TV. And this is a September 16, 2019, Wilson County Commission Meeting. This time, I'll introduce Commissioner Walker, if you would come forward. He has the prayer and pledge. I'd like to remember the family of late Commissioner Gary Tarpley that passed away today. Was a member of our commission for some time, and please remember him and his family. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. You would please welcome a couple guests I had today to help us with the prayer and the pledge. First, my pastor, he's with the Victory Baptist Church, Brother Chuck Ruber, will lead us in the prayer.
Please rise. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, tonight, this commission comes to consider important business, business that will have an impact on the days to come, and we pray for wisdom and guidance as they make those decisions. We have heard of one who served so faithfully here that has passed away. We pray for their family tonight, and we ask, Father, that you will continue to comfort and allow them to know that you are watching over and caring for them in these days. Father, we live in a world that is ever-changing, and we are grateful that we have a God who is watching over us that never changes and always has His eyes on us. We pray, Lord, that we would be reminded of that, and we would act accordingly, and we would be a reflection of His light shining on us. We thank you for these who have dedicated themselves to serve us and our community, that we might have a place that is good, a place that is safe, and a place that all would feel comfortable calling home. Thank you for the blessing that Wilson County has been to me personally and to all who call it home. May we continue to grow in our understanding of our responsibility as we protect it and as we see it grow in your provision. And it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Next, I'd like to introduce a person that I've known for quite a while. Our wives worked together. I'm a veteran of the United States Navy, and so is this gentleman. He graduated from the Naval Academy, served in the submarine service in defense of our nation, Mr. Peter Schuler. You would?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Commissioner Walker. You will please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Twenty-two present and three absent. Report from the steering committee, Commissioner Patton.
Yes, here it is, Chairman. It's in the court, in the court after February, August the 19th, 2019, on Monday night at 5:30 PM. Minutes are impacted, I think that you see.
Got a motion to second. Now, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Adoption of the agenda?
I oppose the motion for adoption of the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? There is no consent agenda, correct?
Correct.
Special recognition this time, I would like to introduce our executive assistant, Ms. Susan Shaw, to come forward.
We are the Board of Drug Free Wilco. Tammy Groh of Lebanon Special School District is the chair. Lieutenant Scott Moore of the Sheriff's Department is the co-chair. Mike Aylon of Greek University is not present tonight. He is our secretary treasurer. And Tim Diffenderfer, Wilson County and Truesdale County Health Department Director, and myself from the Wilson County Mayor's Office as facilitator. Over 100 people work with us to achieve our mission, and we thank them for their contributions. Drug Free Wilco has the mission to prevent and reduce drug misuse and addiction among youth and adults, and to provide education, communication, and to create awareness of the problems and of the resources that are available. Throughout September, we celebrate National Recovery Month, whose 2019 theme is "Join the Voices of Recovery. Together, we are stronger." Addiction is treatable, and anyone who is facing the challenges of addiction should have hope and should be able to reach out for resources. Addiction can affect anyone, mothers, daughters, brothers, and colleagues. Wilson County and Middle Tennessee have resources available right here to provide detox, treatment, counseling, and support. Today, we celebrate our voices of recovery and our providers of recovery services. I'd like to invite our service providers to join us at the podium. Joe Bond of Cedar Recovery, Ralph and Joni Cook and Jacob Die from Lantern Lane Farm Counseling Services, Nicole Payne Bradford Health Services, Erica Lathan and Brian Sullivan from Addiction Campuses, Sarah Perry Gibbs Pharmacy, and Sunny Warmeth Freedom House Thank you, Mayor Hutto and Commissioners who have sponsored this proclamation. Commissioners Sarah Patton, William Glover, Mike Kurtz, Kenny Rich, Chris Dowell, Annette Stafford, and Justin Smith. Commissioner Justin Smith will read the proclamation.
Good evening, Commission. I also want to echo our mayor and welcome our guests. We are glad to see you and glad that you're here with us. As proclamation reads, Wilson County Proclamation from the office of the mayor. National Recovery Month is September of 2019. Whereas the opioid crisis has made a devastating impact on Wilson County citizens, and whereas in 2017, Wilson County had 34 deaths from overdose, and 26 of those were from opioid overdoses. And whereas the opioid crisis impacts all walks of life, affecting friends, neighbors, students, congregations throughout the county. And whereas, with the commitment and support from community, family, healthcare, and treatment providers in the faith-based community, our residents can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. And whereas, we champion those in recovery who have gained the knowledge and the ability to give back to others who struggle with a substance abuse. And whereas, Drug Free Wilco helps to stop the stigma associated with substance abuse by providing educational materials and events to raise awareness of resources available to Wilson County citizens. And whereas, we recognize the efforts towards treatment and recovery by Drug Free Wilco and its coalition members, including Cedar Recovery, Bradford Health Services, Freedom House Ministry, Addiction Campuses, Gibbs Pharmacy, and Lantern Lane Farms, along with all others who join the mission of Drug Free Wilco. Now, aye from the mayor, Randall Hutto of Wilson County, do hereby proclaim September 2019 as National Recovery Month. In Wilson County, Tennessee, and call upon the county commissioners, as well as all residents of Wilson County, to join me in celebrating recovery and observing National Recovery Month by supporting this year's theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery. Together, we are strong."
All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Thank you all for joining with us and the leadership of our Drug Free Wilco team and the work that you guys do. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, for reading that tonight. Report from the minutes committee, Commissioner Bishop. Got a motion to second. Now, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Reading of the minutes?
(inaudible).
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Giving you a letter tonight. It's addressed to my fellow commissioners. After much prayer and consideration, I have decided to resign my position as Wilson County Commissioner, effective immediately following the September 16 County Commission Meeting. This decision does not come easily. However, the time has come for me to step down and allow someone else to lead. I've served the citizens of District 17 for 14 years, and I'm proud of the accomplishments that we've made during that time. Having the opportunity to serve as the Chair of the Budget Committee, Public Works Committee, Judicial Committees have given me great joy. Over the past several years, we have made great strides in infrastructure improvements, employee pay, jail expansion, and a possible judicial center on the horizon. I thank you for your trust and your faith in me, and I hope I've exceeded your expectations. I wish you all the best as you continue to serve our great county. Sincerely, Commissioner Gary Keith. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Keith for our friendship. Commissioner Keith told me that until he started battling sickness, he only missed one meeting out of 13 years, 14 now. I'd like to thank him for his leadership among the commission, because he was a leader. He was a progressive commissioner who strived to do his best for every citizen in Wilson County, and thank him for his dedicated service as he served as an invaluable employee in the Sheriff's Department. We wish him well in his days ahead as he spends more time turning his attention towards his health. He did say he would take a milkshake if anybody had time to bring him one.[735.23][735.23](laughter) The mayor's gathered this last month in our office and signed the Annual Suicide Prevention Awareness Proclamation. Appreciate Ms. Brenda Harper and Mr. Nathan Miller for taking the initiative to make this well-known. I would like to say that the audience probably noticed that the commission left and went to the back, and I'm going to tell you why we did that. It's a special day for Ms. Joy Bishop, our commissioner. It's her birthday today, as well as, and Commissioner Vanata made that happen. Thank you so much for getting everybody together. I thought somebody did, to make that happen. And so, we sang happy birthday to her back there, but it's also Ms. Sandra Doughty's birthday as well. So, if all of you would join me in happy birthday, I think it would be fitting.[787.13][787.13](laughter) Start with me now. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Bishop and Ms. Doughty. Happy birthday to you.[804.13][804.13](applause)
It has been a public records request for ages, and we'll have to file that tomorrow.[815.32][815.32](laughter) I got you. Okay, we'll move on to elections and appointments. Notaries list now. Mr. Goodall, any additions to be added to the list?
We're good.
Do I hear a motion for that?
No.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
(inaudible).
We'll let you vote. No, Ms. Stafford. All in favor, say aye.
No.
Opposed? This time, it's your option to elect a commission chairperson for the next 12 months, and the floor is now open for nominations. Mr. Glover?
Randall Hutto.
Mr. Patton. Any other nominations?
(inaudible).
For that, all in favor, say aye.
No.
Opposed? Thank you for allowing me to serve you. I appreciate that more than you'll ever know. Commission chairperson pro tem now, you will be elected to serve for the next 12 months. Do I hear a motion or nomination, sorry? Commissioner Bannock?
I'd like to nominate Wendell Marlowe.
Mr. Marlowe. Commissioner Patton. Ask again. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. John Gentry.
John Gentry? Do I hear any other nominations?
Motion to nominate (inaudible).
Motion to nominate ceases. Okay, so therefore, we have two people for you to vote on. We'll be voting by paper ballot tonight, and while she's gone, just for the sake of arguments here, as Rule 32A provides for us, the Board of County Commission Rules of Order states that the election of members to the Budget Committee, Finance Committee, Insurance Committees, as well as Road Commission must be done by paper ballot. Ms. Sandra Doughty will pass out the ballots in just a minute. You need to print the name of the individual that you wish to vote for or individuals. Print the name, list your district, please, and you must sign it for your vote to count. Let me emphasize that. Again, you must sign the ballot in order for it to count. They will be collected. We'll ask the pro tem to come up and count those ballots with us. This is not a secret ballot, because all votes are noticed at the end of the meeting through Ms. Doughty's projections, and so you'll be able to see who votes for who, but this is the way the Rules of Order will ask us to do that. So, we'll be voting for Budget Committee in just a few minutes, and Finance Committee as well. She is going to get the ballots as we speak, and we'll vote for Chairman Pro Tem. That's exactly what Mike asked. Commissioner Bishop? Commissioner Bishop? Commissioner Bishop, would you like to make an announcement about what you passed out tonight?
Oh, yes. This is offered by the church of (inaudible) Westland United Methodist, and it's, it's for the whole weekend, on the 28th and the 29th. But the day, Saturday, is the fun day, and I think you could have children six to twelve or something like that, it'd be really good to bring them. I think they'd have a good time. It's all free. There'll be free music, free food, a lot of fun, supposedly. So, you're welcome to come, and we encourage your coming. It's Weston Methodist Church on Dawson Lane. That's the A-frame building. Everybody knows it's the A-frame building. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other public service announcements at this time? They need it in a minute.
(inaudible).[1137.44][1137.44](laughter)
Yes, sir.
(inaudible).[1140.44][1140.44](laughter)
It allowed them to win pretty big. This time now, you will be voting for Chairman Pro Tem. You have two options, Commissioner Wendell Marlowe and Commissioner John Gentry. Be sure and put your district down, please, and sign your ballot. Again, we'll restate, you're voting for Commissioner Chairman Pro Tem. You have two options, Commissioner Marlowe and Commissioner Gentry. Please write one. And at this time, I would ask, Ms. Doughty will pick these up since Chairman Pro Tem have passed. Be sure you sign your ballot, please. Marlowe? Marlowe? Fourteen for Mr. Marlowe and fourteen for, I mean, eight for Mr. Gentry. Mr. Marlowe will be our Chairman Pro Tem. This time now, we'll move forward to voting for four members to serve on the Budget Committee for the next year. Remember the process on this. You'll write four names down as we go through this process. If whoever gets 13 votes is what it takes to win the nomination. If we have a tie, the lowest person comes off and we revote again. Okay? And so, at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations, and Commissioner Weathers.
I want to nominate Mr. William Glover.
Mr. Glover? Commissioner Patton?
I'd like to nominate Annette Stafford, please.
Ms. Annette Stafford? Commissioner Robinson? Commissioner Wendell Marlowe? Commissioner Costley?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Tommy Jones.
Commissioner Tommy Jones? And Commissioner Gentry?
I'd like to nominate Jerry McFarland.
Mr. Jerry McFarland? Mr. Smith? Any other nominations? Seeing none, I hear a motion to nomination cease?
No.
Second? All in favor, say aye. Now, you'll vote for four of the following people. Commissioner Glover, Commissioner Stafford, Commissioner Marlowe, Commissioner Jones, and Commissioner McFarland. Vote for four, please. Be sure you put your district number. Vote for four people. Commissioner Glover, Commissioner Stafford, Mr. Marlowe, Mr. Jones, and Commissioner Pass them to the inside aisle. Ready? You all ready? Marlowe? Stafford? Marlowe? Glover? Stafford? McFarland? McFarland? Glover? Stafford? Marlowe? Glover? Marlowe? Stafford? Glover? Marlowe? Glover? Jones? McFarland? Stafford? Glover? Stafford? Jones? Glover? Marlowe? Jones? Marlowe? Stafford? Glover? Jones? Marlowe? Stafford? Glover? Marlowe? Jones? Glover? Jones? McFarland? Marlowe? Glover? Stafford? Glover? Jones? McFarland? Marlowe? Glover? Stafford? Glover? Jones? Glover, Stafford, Marlowe, Jones. Stafford, Glover, Marlowe, Jones. Glover, Stafford, Marlowe, Jones. Jones, Stafford, Marlowe, Glover. McFarland, Glover, Stafford, Jones. Glover, Stafford, Jones, McFarland. Glover, McFarland. Okay. Got twenty-one for Mr. Glover. Eighteen for Ms. Stafford. Fourteen for Marlowe. Sixteen for Jones. Eleven for McFarland. Budget Committee would be Commissioner Glover, Commissioner Stafford, Commissioner Marlowe, Commissioner Jones. Congratulations. Thank you for serving, for being willing to serve. Now we will elect four members to serve on the Finance Committee. Do the same process here. And I will open the floor for nominations. Commissioner Glover? Commissioner Glover? Commissioner Glover?
I'd nominate Diane Weathers.
Mr. Diane Weathers?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Lauren Brees.
Mr. Lauren Brees? Commissioner Patton? Mr. Walker?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner John Gentry, please.
Mr. John Gentry? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Gentry?
I'd nominate Dan Walker, please.
Mr. Dan Walker? Other nominations? Commissioner Weathers? Mr. Bobby Franklin? Any other nominations? Got a motion to second for nomination cease. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? So now we will vote as we pass out the ballots for four members to be on the Finance Committee. Commissioner Diane Weathers, Commissioner Lauren Brees, Commissioner John Gentry, Commissioner Dan Walker, and Commissioner Bobby Franklin. You can vote for four of these. Please state your district number and please sign your ballot. It does take thirteen votes to win the nomination. Again, you're voting on four members. Commissioner Diane Weathers, Commissioner Lauren Brees, Commissioner John Gentry, Commissioner Dan Walker, and Commissioner Bobby Franklin. Please vote for four. List your district number and please sign your ballot. Finished, pass them to the inside aisle and I'll ask Commissioner Marlowe to collect those, please. We're all ballots in. Weathers? Brees, Walker, Gentry? Brees, Gentry, Franklin, Walker? Weathers, Walker, Brees, Franklin? Brees, Weathers, Walker, Franklin? Brees, Weathers, Walker, Gentry? Weathers, Brees, Walker, Franklin? Weathers, Gentry, Walker, Franklin? Franklin, Brees, Walker, Weathers? Weathers, Gentry, Walker, Franklin? Weathers, Brees, Gentry, Franklin? Gentry, Franklin, Weathers, Walker? Walker, Weathers, Brees, Franklin? Walker, Weathers, Franklin, Brees? Weathers, Gentry, Walker, Franklin? Weathers, Gentry, Franklin, Walker? Franklin, Gentry, Walker, Weathers? Weathers, Brees? Gentry, Weathers, Franklin, Walker? Walker, Weathers, Franklin, Gentry? Brees, Weathers? Weathers, Gentry, Walker, Franklin? Weathers, Brees, Franklin? Weathers, twenty-one. Brees, thirteen. Gentry, twelve. Walker, eighteen. Franklin, nineteen. Finance Committee is Commissioner Diane Weathers, Commissioner Lauren Brees, Commissioner Dan Walker, Commissioner Bobby Franklin. Congratulations and thank you for being willing to serve. Ethics Committee? You are to confirm my appointment of five members if you choose to do so for a one-year term. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to appoint Commissioners Terry Ash, Commissioners Mike Kurtz, Commissioners Chris Dow, Commissioners Cindy Banick, and Mr. Earl Ray. There are information about these people in your packet. They're your pleasure. Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Industrial Development Board member, one member. You are to appoint one member to fill the unexpired term of the late Mr. Gordon Bone on the Industrial Development Board. I'd like to recommend for your consideration, Mr. Jay Morris. Information about Mr. Morris was in your packet for you to review. Got a motion to second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Water and Wastewater Authority member, you are to confirm the appointment of one member to serve a five-year term on the Water and Wastewater Authority. Upon your confirmation and Executive Director's, Crystal Luber's recommendation, I'd like to recommend to you to appoint Ms. Trevina Holder for another term. Got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover? Emergency Management Director's report, Director Cooper. My fault. Chief Hobbs, we'd already talked about this. These Hobbs will be here tonight in place of Director Cooper. My fault.
Good evening. Director Cooper cannot be here tonight. Pretty much same business for August. Medical calls, twelve hundred and three calls. Fire calls for the county, forty-nine. Rescue, two hundred and nine. Total calls for the month is fourteen hundred and sixty-one. I believe Director Cooper is in Charles' out, Charles' packet. Emergency management activities since last meeting. The two thousand and nineteen Wilson County Fair. Wilson County, the Health Department meeting. General Regional Directors meeting. National Weather Service Weekly Webinars of Facility Disaster Drills. Facility Site Visits. Smoke alarm installations. Outdoor warnings, hiring testing. And situ awareness briefings.
All, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich? Sheriff's report, Sheriff Bryan?
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners. Reports in your packet. Numbers that you see, pretty much all the numbers this past month were up, including calls for service, state warrants and civil warrants received. And the number of the highest capacity in the jail was up to five hundred and thirty-one. So it's, was a busy month. Our inmate work crews continue to stay busy. We're fixing getting that as the weather starts cooling off, I hope. It's pretty hot outside, but we'll try to wrap up everything before it gets real cold. So if you got any roads that need some attention, please let us know and we'll do our best to get out there. And they've been staying also staying busy at several of the civic groups and the fairgrounds, boat ramps, different places. School resource officers, it's a busy time of year for schools. They're staying active in the schools and keeping up to date of what's going on in the schools. So I want to say one more thing. Commissioner Keith, me all know he worked for the Sheriff's Office. And he's going to be missed and he done a whole lot for this county. He done a whole lot for the Sheriff's Office. And don't tell Gary Keith that you need something done because he's going to go get it done. And I'm telling you what Gary Keith wants. He wants somebody, he wants somebody, he wants everybody to do that. That's what, that's what he did. And I went and saw him last week and it hurts him real bad that he's not sitting over in that chair. And don't everybody show up at the same time with the milkshake because he will not like that. But that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Commissioner Walker? Chocolate?
He probably would get chocolate, huh?
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford? And Director of Schools, Report, Dr. Donna Wright?
Good evening. You have a report in your packet. Just briefly, just some updates that I want, again, to thank this body. Our school district's been recognized as far as the highest status and designated as an exemplary district. Out of one hundred and forty-five school districts, there were twenty that were identified as exemplary. Only two large school districts met that designation, Williamson County and Wilson County. And so that's something for this body to take pride in and simply for the support that you've given to allow our schools to achieve their very best and particularly on behalf of the students in this county. And it's, as our motto says, every student, every day, no excuses. And our teachers and our administrators are meeting that challenge. Something really to take pride in. Also, just bring up data as our last enrollment count on September the third, we're at nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen students. Still growing. And just want to recognize a few people that by the time I sent your report in, it was too late to note it. We have a teacher at Watertown High School, a math teacher by the name of Kyle Sikorski that's a finalist, a state finalist at this point that could possibly go on to the Nationals in math and science. He's an extraordinary teacher. And we have four national merit semifinalists. Again, this is out of a million students that hit the first cut means that they're in the top one percent in the nation. And I bring this to you every year as we look at these youngsters. We have Nama Neeth Shaboo at Wilson Central, Kyle Hacker at Mount Juliet High School, and two at Lebanon High School, North Hopper and Azra Haley from Lebanon High School. And just a note, we're going to host a STEM community meeting on October the twenty-fourth at our ATC building. I bring that to your attention because of what we're doing in coding and computer science. And we have adults now asking if we can also offer those boot camps and training for adults as well. And if we can make that happen, we're certainly going to open up to the community because we all benefit because that's the market right now, particularly as we see Amazon moving in. And I've shared with our board and I need to share with this group here that the concern being that they're going to have a thousand positions, particularly the group that's moving into Nashville. And they're concerned about not being able to meet the workforce demands as far as in that technical field. And if we can't meet it, they'll bring them in from the west and east coast. So we've got to make sure that we do that and make sure that Middle Tennessee is represented in that workforce because the average salary's a little over a hundred thousand, close to a hundred and fifty thousand a year. And with that concludes my report for this evening.
Any discussion? I'd like to commend Dr. Wright for her achievement of Superintendent of the Year for the state of Tennessee at one hundred and forty-five districts. Congratulations to you. All in favor on the report, say aye. Opposed? Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers? Ag Center Management Report, Commissioner Scruggs? Ag Center Management Report? No report. Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
Animal Control met in regular session on Thursday, September the fifth, five-thirty. Minutes are in your packet, a move they be receiving and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Table Tax, Commissioner Walker.
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanada. Ethics, Commissioner Kurtz. Finance, Commissioner Gentry. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
On September the third, Tuesday night at six P.M. in the commission room. Minutes are in your packet, but they're received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Insurance, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover. Land and zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
So, you guys, please allow me to take care of a couple of housekeeping items first. We are a member of the three-star community program. Those of you who have been serving a while are familiar that this is the part of the ceremony where I get up and read our debt management policy verbatim unless you by roll call say, don't, just tell me basically what it says. Just kidding, I'm just gonna tell you basically what it says. Basically, the debt management policy is designed to achieve the lowest cost of capital within acceptable risk parameters, to maintain or improve credit ratings, assure reasonable cost access to capital markets, preserve financial and management flexibility, and manage interest rates, interest rate risk exposure within acceptable risk parameters. Basically, it says that we will be transparent, we will issue only debt by utilizing the statutory authorities provided by TCA, adhere to any lawfully promulgated rules and regulations of the state and those promulgated under the code, and all debt must be formally authorized by resolution of the county's legislative body. It goes on to talk about the types of debt that we will issue. In short, we cannot issue debt for operations. You cannot in Tennessee deficit spend and fund that with operations, just so everybody's clear. And you're borrowing, the useful life of the asset that you're constructing must exceed the term of the loan in Tennessee. So, basically, we always borrow for capital assets and the useful life is always longer than the asset. The payment term is always shorter than the useful life of the asset. I'll say that right in a minute. I do have copies of the debt management policy. It goes on to talk about negotiated sales. Usually what we do is competitive sales, but it also has something in there about a negotiated sale and other things. If you want a copy of the debt management policy, please email me or come by the office and I'll make you a paper copy, whichever one you'd like. The three-star requirements also say that we need to acknowledge that prior to the issuance of debt, an annual cash flow forecast is prepared for the appropriate fund and submitted to the comptroller's office. And it is, if y'all remember, I come to you with those C.T. forms for each debt issue. Once the debt has been issued, it shows the cash flow. And even prior to that, the comptroller's office is furnished with a cash flow schedule that shows that, that there is sufficient cash flow to service the debt. And finally, confirmation of documented internal, internal controls requirement. We have extensive documentation on internal controls. This began about three years ago by the state of Tennessee. They've been, they began requiring that. That is too voluminous for me to carry around or read to you, but if you do have trouble sleeping, I'm more than happy to provide you with that, and I think that will help. One more personal note before we get to, to real business. I've been close to, fortunate to count a lot of commissioners that have served in this body as not only colleagues but as friends. And for me, Gary Keith was one of the closest friends that I had as a commissioner. From the time, probably before the time, but particularly from the time that Gary became Chairman of the Budget Committee. We had lunch together on a number of occasions, and I think what I loved about Gary the most is Gary was open-minded but not indecisive, and there's a difference. Okay? You could always talk to Gary, you could always tell him, and he was open-minded, but that didn't mean he was indecisive, that he wasn't able to make up his own mind and move in the direction that he felt was best for the citizens of his district and the citizens of this county. And for me, not having Gary in that chair is, is painful. But I'm sure that whoever replaces Gary will do a great job, and I certainly will try to visit with, with Gary myself because I'm going to miss him very much. Onto the business at hand, there is a proposal tonight, of course, to raise the adequate facilities tax. I put on your desk a sheet that had four different proposals, just so you could see the numbers. The top one is the proposal that, that is made, which is to raise adequate facilities tax by four thousand, five hundred dollars to a total of seven thousand, five hundred. You'll see what I've done is I've averaged, and what I'm really paying attention to is, is the post-recovery section. There is that period going back to two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve, we were still in the Great Recession. Okay? Two thousand and thirteen forward, so two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and nineteen is where we've really been in, in economic growth mode again. And over that period of time, if you average that, that out over seven years, between both funds, between the Capital Projects Fund and the Debt Service Fund, you're averaging, collecting four million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in adequate facilities tax between both funds. The proposal to raise it forty-five hundred would be an additional intake of about seven point four million, which I did not put this on your sheet, but that's the equivalent of about seventeen point four nine cents on the tax rate. The other proposals that I put back there were lesser amounts. If you raised it three thousand, which is to double it, obviously you would be talking about another four million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand that would be coming in. That's eleven point six six cents on the tax rate. If you went to twenty-five hundred, that's an additional just over four million dollars. That's nine point seven two cents on the tax rate. And if you raised it two thousand, that would be three point three million, which would be seven point seven cents on the tax rate, seven point seven seven. I also thought it was important to note what it would look like if there was a five percent decrease in building because from that you can extrapolate. So, if you look at, if you look at the front page, this gives a nice round number of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. A five percent decrease in building would result in collecting instead of seven million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven million, sixty thousand. So, you could extrapolate then if there was a, if there was a ten percent, it would be twice that much you wouldn't collect, and so on and so forth. That number is in there for everyone. We're here tonight, obviously, because we've all heard the call, you know, not to put an additional burden on, on property tax owners, and yet we know we have to fund a jail if we don't do anything else. We know we have to fund a jail. And I don't envy the seats that you're sitting in, and I will answer any questions that you have for me at the present time.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir. I want to thank you for this work sheet and the work that you do for the county as our Finance Director. By chance, do you or anybody in the mayor's office have a comparison of adequate facilities tax with this county and the surrounding counties?
I did some calling, and, and basically I didn't call Williamson County. Williamson is, is up pretty high. But the best that I was able to determine from talking to Sumner and Rutherford, they're both right around the fifteen hundred dollar mark, more or less. And now, some of them compute on, and thank you for asking the question, Commissioner Walker, because that did bring to light something that I didn't want to respond to. One of them, I think, is a flat fifteen hundred. The other is computed on a square footage basis, and I think when I did like a two thousand square foot house, it came out roughly the same. So, I would say Rutherford and Sumner are both below the point that we are right now based on, based on what I've seen. And I talked to both the Finance Department and the Building Codes Department in both counties. Now, what I wanted to say was there was a letter on your desk that said that there would be no problem with you changing the way you compute A.F.T. I want to reiterate, there would be a major problem with you changing the way that you compute A.F.T. It's not an amendment of the Private Act for you to raise the rate because the Private Act allows you to do so. But if you change the way you compute it, that would be an amendment of your Private Act, which would throw you under the County Powers Relief Act, which would make every dollar raised go for education, educational facilities. So, there wouldn't be any dollars available to do any county capital projects or county taxes.
So, could you amend the new A.F.T. per foot and leave the three thousand in place?
In my interpretation of the law, and I'll defer to the county attorney, no. That would be also an amendment of the current act. That's my interpretation of the law. We could not even pass a supplemental. In other words, we couldn't pass a second tax that was separate and apart from the first. That would throw everything under the County Powers Relief Act.
Mr. Patton?
Raise it forty-five hundred dollars. So, could you tell us, the question I asked you earlier, for every one thousand dollars that it might be lowered tonight of that forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Forty-five hundred, how much in revenues would?
Every thousand dollars, and I know you have that number in front of you, Ms. Patton, I didn't bring it up here with me, but I believe it was right at one million, six hundred and fifty thousand?
One million, six hundred and fifty, one thousand, six hundred and twenty.
Okay, so every thousand dollars you lower, it lowers the, lowers the revenue coming in by that amount.
Thank you.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes. So, it states if we do end up trying to change anything that throws this under County Powers Act, it states the tax may be levied at a rate not to exceed a dollar per square foot. Square foot is determined based on the total heated air conditioning residential space. Once adopted, the rate of the tax cannot be increased for four years. Once the four-year period is run, the county legislative body may increase the rate but by no more than ten percent. So, my question to you, based on this, so what it states, my understanding is that we can, if we, if we change it and end up outside of our Private Act, we could go to a dollar per square foot.
We would actually go backwards, yes, ma'am.
That's my question.
Yeah, we would actually go backwards.
So, we would end up?
Not only would we go backwards in terms of our ability to use the funds because they would be restricted completely for education, but we would also go backwards in terms of dollars collected. You're, you're correct on both counts.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that and make sure I was correct. Thank you.
Any other questions for our Finance Director? Do you hear a motion to approve his report? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Maynard. Mr. Glover? Any questions? Seeing all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Our resolution tonight, nineteen-nine, verse, or two, is resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, increasing the current Wilson County adequate facility tax.
Do you hear a motion to approve? Second? Now, discussion, Commissioner Rich.
I got a second.
Who made the second, Commissioner Patton or Commissioner Scruggs? Commissioner Rich?
I probably made a mistake the last two or three months because I said it's been real dull for the last year. Well, I wanted a little excitement, well, and we got it. So, I probably had more calls on this. I've been here thirteen years and probably had more calls on this than anything I've had in the thirteen years I've been here, including tax increases. Talked to a lot of people, talked to a lot of real estate agents, talked to a lot of developers. I talked also just people out in the public. One thing, and, and I've had commissioners that I've talked to said, we really don't know what this is gonna do, and I'd like for you to state what this is gonna do. And I know a lot of the people out here sitting in the audience does not know why we're asking for this. First of all, everybody knows we gotta build a jail. We're running about seventy-five over per bed right now. If we don't build a jail come March, when we start on this, federal government's gonna step in and make us do it. We don't pass a property tax increase until August. So, this is our only option really on the jail. Also included in this is two WEMA stations in the Mount Juliet, the west end of the county, a convenience center for the west end of the county in North Mount Juliet, which they dearly need, also a judicial center. Probably within about two years, we're gonna be voting on how to fund this judicial center. This is part of it. And also, it goes to schools. And everybody knows in this county how we're building schools everywhere around. Mr. Maynard stated that Rutherford County, I asked about two he had talked to, Rutherford County and Sumner County, both of them stated what there was, they were less than us. What you don't know is Rutherford County and Sumner County both passed a substantial property tax increase this year. That's what we trying not to do, but both of them, I forget how much they were, but both of them were pretty sizable property tax increases. I've talked to a lot of people in the public, most general public, and I know the realtors, developers are against it because it gets in, you know, and they're gonna have to pass it on. It doesn't affect them so much, but they gotta pass it on to the people they're building houses for, and it does affect that. We can't do square footage because we gotta go back and get our Private Act redone by the legislature, and that won't even be looked at until March to do it on square footage. Most public that I have talked to says, we think this is the best thing to do, don't raise our property tax. I could say a lot more, but what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna make a motion that we amend this resolution. And here's my motion. I'm gonna, I make a motion that we amend this to add two thousand dollars to the three thousand that is in place right now, which would make it five thousand dollars effective tomorrow morning. And then, on January the first, twenty twenty-one, that we add another two thousand to this. This will give people time, and that's what a lot of them said, give us time. We add another two thousand to the five thousand if it passes, and that would make it a total seven thousand dollars. Now, this is what it's gonna take people to do what I just read you about schools, judicial centers, WEMA stations, jail, and everything else. That's what it's gonna take. If not, if we turn this down, you better be ready come next year to vote for a substantial property tax increase. Because without this, we're gonna have a big property tax increase. There's no way around it. I made my motion.
Just a second, hang on. I got an amendment to the resolution to lower it to two thousand dollars for, to start tomorrow, with two thousand more added January first of twenty twenty-one. And I got a motion and a second on that, and now for discussion, Commissioner Patton?
Commissioner Rich, you're saying that we need to reduce the revenue by three point three million dollars right now?
Yes, because the judicial center does not come on. Judicial center, we're gonna start on it now by two years. And we already got the property, three years from now, we're gonna be doing judicial center. That would give people relief on this, you know, till we need the money. And with some people, and I know some people, see some people shaking their head right now and they're not for that, they don't wanna add it on. They don't want to add it on later. But I want to come back next year, I want to come back this time next year, and that's what it would be, and then just all over.
I was in the meetings with you, and you didn't say a thing about this. Just now, because all the realtors calling you. The realtors didn't put us in here, neither did the builders. The citizens of Wilson County did, and they're the main ones who called me and then wrote me letters and sent me emails. True, the builders and the realtors did, and I appreciate that. But I was put here for the taxpayers of Wilson County, and the majority of them want this. So I'm, I'm not for the motion at all. That's right.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I was just taking all this in, like Commissioner Rich, I got an awful lot of calls and people talk to me. But I also was looking at other, we get several streams of revenue coming into the county. I believe there's some new revenue streams coming in. I think Representative Susan Lynn sat before us and talked to us about this online gambling. It's supposed to bring Wilson County a million dollars the first year. What's it going to bring the second and third year? I believe that the internet sales tax is going to generate some revenue for us also. We just refunded a bond and got another three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars a year. We got two pilot taxes rolling off. I think about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand a year coming in here soon. So there are other revenues coming in. So I do believe, when I ran for office last year, all the people I spoke to said they're in favor of adequate facilities tax over raising real estate taxes.
Mr. Breeze?
I was in a chamber meeting on Friday morning, listening to Dr. Rice speaking. She was talking about the future of schools in the next several years. And I know that she was saying that we need to potentially look at a high school north of two-thirty-one area, because Lebanon is bursting, starting to burst the seams. And then, they're having issues also south Gladeville area with possibly even another elementary school. And when I asked her about that, I asked her a timeline, and she said two to three years potentially. So if that's the case, do we have a plan for that? Would that, if, if those things come to fruition? Would that make a difference, I guess, in what we choose to do here if we have to actually start expanding, you know, build another school?
And Commissioner Rich mentioned in his, in what this was for, one-third goes to capital projects, two-thirds goes to general debt service, which is paid for schools.
Right. But if we're looking at, trying to decide on the plans as to which plan to go with, are we factoring in the possibility of having to build schools if we go with two-thousand, then two-thousand versus the straight seventy-five-hundred now? Do you see what I'm asking? Is that something we should consider?
That's just a point you're making, right?
So I'm just asking if anybody has any questions or any response or thoughts.
Mr. Glover's next. If you have a response, push your button.
I do like the two-thousand a whole lot better than the forty-five-hundred. I do not like the, the automatic in two years. But the only, the only good thing I can see out of that is that we can change it next month if we need to. If we do property tax, you have to wait an entire year. It also lets us be able to look at a lot more revenue streams, as Commissioner Walker was talking about. Other ways, as we get closer and get the bids in for the jail, as we look at the judicial center, as we, as we address all the school needs, the tremendous growth, and everybody that's in this room now understands how much growth that Wilson County is, is happening right, right this second. So I, I feel a lot more comfortable with the two-thousand, a lot more comfortable than I do forty-five-hundred. I think it gives us the opportunity to go ahead and kind of, kind of look as we plan, because as I told the school system earlier, talked to the mayor, we have a very rough year, especially budget, welcome to budget there, Commissioner Jones. But I already told, I already told the director that, starting next month, that we're going to be working, looking at needs, trying to figure out a way to sit there and have the, the smallest impact on our citizens as we can. And it, we got a lot of, a lot of planning, a lot of meetings that we're going to be looking at all this. So I can stomach that. One thing that I would like to do, instead of starting tomorrow, is to give it thirty days. Just to kind of, just to let, give people a chance, because I know a lot of, a lot of the calls I filled, just like you did, was that they had no idea this was happening. And this will give them a chance that, that a few of the things that are in the pipeline now, it gives them thirty days to sit there and kind of look at stuff. But we, we got a rough year there, ladies and gentlemen. And I appreciate everybody coming too, and we'll go out of session here in a minute. But I'd prefer to give thirty days to kind of...
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to say that I think that Williams is on the right path. We just need to pass what we're going to pass tonight and not put something down the road two years from now. I just can't vote to pass a tax on somebody in two years from now that we may not need the money, or we may need more money than that. And I'd also like to make a motion right now to suspend the rules, go out of session, have a minute, few minutes for public comment.
Motion to go out a second? I got an amendment on the floor, but I can go out of session at any time. So I got a motion and a second to amend. I know I've got other discussion here. I had a motion from Commissioner Jones to go out of session and a second. Now, we'll vote on that. If you don't want to go out of session at this point, you want to continue this discussion, we can do that. But you'll have to vote no, you don't want to go out of session, okay? So I got a motion and a second to recess in order to allow the public to speak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Either aye's have it. Therefore, we will have a public comment. And Mr. Jones, this comment is public comment for no longer than thirty minutes. Allowing the public to speak at two minutes per person. We would ask that you would state your name and address for the record. And we ask you to be, to keep it professional, please.
Can we finish our conversation while we started on this, so we got it right in front? You still got to take the second question, speak on it. Let's finish what we were talking about, giving a statement before we go.
That would have been good. That's what I was saying, that if you don't want to go out of session, don't vote to go out of session and do that. We're out of session right now, so you'd have to vote no on that. Sorry. Okay, so we will start, Mr. Doughty, can you help me with the two minutes? Two minutes per person, for thirty minutes total, and we will start now. Anyone wishing to speak to the commission?
Go ahead and start.
Yes, sir.
I'm Philip Donnell, and it seems like doing this is, is kind of isolating and almost penalizing a group of folks. I have friends that build in this county, and they're closing on twenty, thirty, forty homes a month. And it, it's almost like we might need an occupancy tax, because the, and this is not biased, or I'm, I'm trying to remain as wide open as possible, but the folks that are ending up in your jails are not building houses. The people that are ending up in your jails are living in apartment complexes and multifamily units. So, and I don't have a dog in this fight, I just think that it, it needs to be considered about who you're, you're hitting the hardest, because when I think about building a home, well, paying that money is not bad. But when you have folks that are doing great things for this county, you're penalizing them. Thank you.
We'll please hold your applause until the end, so we can, don't waste somebody's time, please. Thank you.
Mayor Hutto, County Commission, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Dwayne Van Hook. I've been a longtime builder. My family was builder in this county. And I'm here as a representative of the Home Builders Association of Middle Tennessee, and also as the area vice president for the State Home Builders Association of Tennessee. What I'm looking at is, I'm not going to ask you to change the number. We've got plenty of people that will discuss the numbers with you. You'll have to determine it. I would like to thank you for your ability to keep this county safe, for looking at, and for having good schools, because that's what makes our industry able to do this. My complication with this is I'm going to ask you to extend this for at least six months. Thirty days is not, not much better than tomorrow morning. Our industry states that we have to work within a budget. We have to prove these things within our, in all, every company out there. They have to work for months and years to plan how many buildings that they're going to put on, on the ground. We're not talking about the guys, like myself, when I built was one, two, or three homes at a time. I'm talking about the guys that are putting down ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty homes a month. What you're asking them to do is create a financial hardship on that company. You're asking them, because our homes take four, six months, somewhere down there, the average is five to six months to get one turned. Our salespeople need time to, to work this in, get their prices in the right place, get their money coming in. A tax that starts tomorrow for someone building twenty, twenty-two homes in the fourth quarter costs them a hundred-thousand dollars. That hundred-thousand dollars has to come out of somewhere, they just can't pull it out of thin air. It's something they have to prepare for. The reason we ask for six months is because if it takes five to six months to turn a home, they're going to have, these same people are going to have roughly two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars out of their operating capital to be able to work and, and pay salaries and pay, and keep this, and keep this going. So that's what I'm looking at. I'm asking you to do the, do the right thing and make this a, an extended proposal. Thank you.
If you can, respect the time as much as possible, so everybody, everybody can talk.
That tone is the, is the time runner, is that what the? My name is John Shealy. I'm the executive vice president for the Home Builders Association of Middle Tennessee. We serve all of Middle Tennessee, with the exception of Rutherford County and Montgomery County. And I'd just like to point out that, you know, behind me are a lot of builders and developers who have chosen to invest in Wilson County. And when they did that, there were certain risks they took, undertook. It could be lumber prices, interest rates, all of those. But to, to increase this fee so much, so quickly, you're really putting a burden on them when they're competing against builders and developers who invested in Sumner County, and builders and developers who invested in Davidson County. This is the wrong message you want to tell people who, who want to invest in this county. And while there may be, you know, things to discuss over a month's period of time, or, or many months' time, to take a, a tax and increase it over a hundred percent and then make it effective the next day, or even the beginning of the next year, that prices so many people out of some of the products that they're building. In other words, the, the buyer they were looking for either can't afford what they were planning to build, or can buy as much house for four-thousand dollars less up in Gallatin or in Nashville. And while you may not care where that particular buyer lives, you should care about the people who have invested in your county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. I'm John Williams. I'm a lawyer with the law firm Toon, Intrigant, and White in Nashville. And I'm here on behalf of the Eastern Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors tonight. And I just want to make a couple of points for you to think about. I know that the commission's going to have a, you know, a vigorous debate about this, because there are several proposals. But if the, if the commission chose to go to seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars, you'd be far and away the highest county in the state of Tennessee in terms of your adequate facilities tax. I, I've looked at the counties, I'm pretty, pretty sure I'm right about that. But nevertheless, you're going to be one of the highest, if not the highest. Most of the counties, as you know, have a tax that's based on square footage. And I, I don't want to really get into this debate. I may disagree with the notion that you can't do that under your private act. I've looked at your private act pretty closely. I think you can do a tax per square foot, but that's something for your county attorney to opine on. I'm just, I'm very concerned that if you go up as high as you're talking about going, you're going to drive builders to build in other counties, other than Wilson. And let me respectfully suggest that the financial projections that were given were based on the same amount of building occurring as has occurred in the last several years. And if the number of houses that are built declined, the revenue's going to decline. And so if you drive builders to other counties, I don't think those financial projections that you've heard are going to turn out to be true. And Chatham County, just to give you an example of another county that dramatically raised their adequate facilities tax several years ago, and they found that that happened, that builders immediately started building in other counties and quit building in Chatham County. And they were, I think, at three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per lot, per unit. And they reduced it to fifty dollars, because they didn't want to drive builders away. And so, anyway, I think that's something for you to really think about. And the final point, if I may, is an issue that hasn't come up. I don't know if the county attorney has addressed this issue, but the vested property rights act that was passed in twenty-fourteen by the legislature provides that the, the, the development standards, that's the term that's used in the statute, that are in effect at the time a builder gets his or her preliminary plat approved by the planning commission, remain the standards that follow that construction throughout the building of, of the subdivision. And so it's our position that the adequate facilities tax, or an impact fee, whatever it's called, is a development standard. And that so, for all of those builders that have gotten their preliminary plats approved, for those houses that are built in those subdivisions, this increase cannot be imposed on such a builder, for the houses in that subdivision where the preliminary plat's been approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.